It's um working before we start this.
All right, well, it is five thirty and all the council members are present and we really need to kind of get plow through this and leave ourselves some time. So if possible, I'd like to conclude this no later than six ten. Well, let's get started. Brian, you starting it up?
Uh, yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's hard to hear you, Brian. We want to hear you.
Just have to talk closer to the microphone.
Okay, Stantec and Mindot are here tonight to present the Mankato Avenue TH forty-three project and they're going to go through a couple of alternatives that were explored and go with the preferred alternative. So on that alternate over to Dale and Kevin.
All right. Thanks, Brian. My name is Dale Grove. I'm the project manager for Stantec on the trunk highway forty-three project. Chad Hanson is the Mindot project manager. Chad, are you with us?
I am. Hi there. Like you said, I've project manager here. So um Kevin, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself and then I can maybe talk a little bit.
Sure, I'm Kevin Hogland. I'm with Stantec as well on the project development lead, working with Dale Grove.
All right. Is everybody seeing that the slide or right? I'm only seeing half, I guess.
There we go.
There you go.
There you go. Okay.
Got it. All right. Yeah, well, thanks, everybody for meeting with us. I know some of you been to a few of the project meetings and probably seen some of our materials online. But I guess we just wanted to come to you guys, give you a chance to answer any questions. I'm sure George and others have been keeping you up to date as well, but we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page too. So before we go ahead any further. So I guess, starting out, you know, about middle of last year, we we really coming into the project, we you know, we knew it was a very complex corridor, a lot going on on forty-three and we started out really looking from highway sixty-one to Sarnia Street. And, you know, obviously, you know it better than we do, but it's a very complex corridor. There's a lot going on. There's you know, high volume of trucks, very high traffic volumes. You know, there's safety issues out there and then you mix in the pedestrians and bikes and so what we did was, we really wanted to make sure we understood the input from everybody from the locals who drive this corridor every day. You know, we have our data and our traffic, the crashes we review and the traffic volumes and congestion, but we wanted to get out there and hear from some of these groups, you know, the bikers, the people who walk this corridor every day. You know, some of the truckers who are who are going through there. So I guess we just have a summary of some of the things we did do last year. Um, you know, we had an open house. I think some of you maybe were able to attend that. That was the first open house we had last year. Um, we have, we've had a Facebook pa- or a Facebook page and we have our project website as well. Um, with a lot of good information on that and where people could submit comments as well. You know, we we did some pop-up sessions at the gas station, at the hospital. We held listening sessions with some of the groups. You know, not going to name who we all met with, but we met with various groups as well. We did a walking audit of the corridor. We went, we actually went out there. Some people rode bikes and provided input to us after that. We kind of stopped every intersection along the way. And I just kind of get people's input on what what the real issues are that are going on out there that, just to make sure we understood it. And then we also have our engagement committee and I think that's been very valuable valuable as well. You know, George is on that. If he wants to speak to that, but we have, you know, we have the Chamber of Commerce on there. We have Winona Health has been a part of that. We have law enforcement. Of course, Brian DeFrang's been on that as well. So we've kind of tried to keep those people in the loop as we went along and try to use them as a kind of a conduit to to provide input back to their groups. So we won't have to, you know, there's a limit to all the number of people you can meet with and provide information to, but I think that committee's been very valuable for that. And then just, I guess, a couple of months ago before COVID hit, we got snuck in our last open house before and all our public meetings were canceled, but um so we kind of lucked out with the timing on that. So that's just some of the, I guess, some of what we've done to date. I guess maybe going ahead to the next slide, it was just, it's kind of interesting. We met with so many different people, but it seemed like a lot of the same themes kept coming up time and time. Everybody we were meeting with independently, but a lot of the same themes kept coming back over and over. And you guys could probably say the same same things as what we have here, but some of the biggest things were you know, I guess, starting with the bikers, that was a big thing on the west side. We really heard that there was a desire to connect that bike trail south of highway sixty-one. You know, it comes from Sarnia Street, follows down the west side by the lake and then kind of goes down and then just stops at Bruzki. So we we heard that people wanted a safe way to get across sixty-one and to kind of connect down into Eastlake Boulevard, that area. A lot of the issues with pedestrians and bikers trying to cross highway forty-three. I know with the hospital on the one side and the lake on that same side, trying to get over to the businesses. Seemed like a lot of the signals don't have long enough crossing times out there right now. And then even at Sarnia, just with all of the turning traffic. Guess be pretty challenging for pets and bikes, I know, in through that area. Another big one was people just taking left turns onto the, onto Mankato Avenue and a couple of the biggest ones, you know, trying to take a left out of Sarnia to go north. It's kind of next to impossible during certain times of the day. Um, and then and at Parks and Bruzki, kind of the same thing during the busy periods. People just can't take lefts out of there safely. You know, following down, just there's a lot of speed variability with people stopping and and starting at the signals. You know, it just creates that much more safety issue for pedestrians, bikes, for cars, kind of everybody. And then the last thing that people identified as a common theme was really at sixty-one and all the congestion there. There's a lot of queued up traffic in AM and PM. You know, starting to block off the left turn lanes, getting up into the through lanes and you know, starting to impact some of the other intersections that are just up and down stream from six, from sixty-one on on Mankato. So those are some of the biggest themes we have. There was countless other ones we received. I think we have like twenty-three page document up on our website. If you really want to read through more of the detailed comments, but just kind of a snapshot, I guess, to where we are at up to this time, up to now. So are there any questions for me? That on any of this stuff or?
Yeah, George here, Chad. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Has there been anything done as far as a left turn off of Mankato onto Bruzki Drive? Which affects the Severson Gas Station, the two hotels and the entrance to Fleet Farm. I know that was a concern that was brought up. I know I brought it up. Has there been any type of change in that intersection right there?
There actually has and that's probably a very good segue into our next part where we can just go over the layouts. And then maybe it'd be easier to answer any questions at that time, if that works for you. Let's hold off on that. So Kevin, I don't know, do you want to just take over or Dale and just kind of walk through the two alternatives that we looked at?
Sure, I'll jump in here, Chad, but obviously feel free to add anything I might forget. It's when you work on a project like this, a complicated corridor, as Chad men- mentioned, sometimes you forget things that that you you ought to be bringing up. When we started the development of of the corridor and looking at the improvements, the first thing we considered was what if we keep all of the intersections as traditional type intersections? So signalized intersections that people are generally used to and that similar to what are out there today. So starting, well, before I start looking at the corridor specifically, there's a couple of things I want to mention in general when you look at corridors. We went into the development of this layout, understanding that signalized intersections can improve congestion. We know that Mankato is a heavily traveled highway. It's the most heavily traveled piece of road in Winona. And signalized intersections can help improve congestion. Roundabouts also can improve congestion and they can usually do it better than signals can. In this corridor that we are looking at here, there's a lot of old signals or the signals that are there are old, I should say. So they can be replaced, but they are replaced at a cost. A standard run-of-the-mill signal system runs at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and has long lead times for a lot of the components. So those are things to be considered. Roundabouts eliminate the needs for a signal and then also help eliminate any maintenance or operation issues due to failure of equipment or power outages or anything else. So thirdly, the last thing that in general of the corridor is as we were developing this project, we found a paper from Golden, Colorado that talked about roundabouts in a corridor that was very, very similar to this corridor. They had received pushback. There was a lot of, I'm not sure this is a good idea from some of the folks that worked and owned businesses along that corridor. But without going into a lot of the details, the upshot was that the people along the corridor and the people that used the corridor ended up liking it so much, they asked for an additional roundabout at one end. And from a traffic perspective, it was very interesting to note that the traffic speeds in the corridor decreased. At the time it took to get through the corridor decreased as well. So people were going slower, but you could still get through the corridor faster. So those were some of the things we looked at as we started development of our layouts. At highway sixty-one, the sixty-one forty-three intersection was a big concern to Mindot. There was a lot of crashes here. And they're concerned about what could be done to mitigate those crashes and make this intersection more safe. Not much happens with traditional intersections. You'll see that the pavement that would have been at this intersection actually increases that every approach to the intersection requires two left turn lanes to simply get the turners through on reasonable cycle times for the signal system. The signalized intersection with dual less lefts would reduce the queues, but it also ends up creating some issues as well. Pedestrian issues on this layout would go up, even though trails would be installed crossing these vast expanses of pavement, especially for folks who may not be as quick or as nimble as as I used to be when I was twenty, that maybe take a little extra time. It could include children and bicycles. It could include elderly folks with with walkers. It could include people in wheelchairs. The signal times, some sometimes tend to get a little bit short for getting across such a wide stretch of pavement. Pedestrian issues here, as I mentioned, signalized makes it worse. There's more pavement to cross and and the signalized intersections don't necessarily mitigate the high speeds that were contributing to some of the crashes here. So that was a concern as well. Kevin, you want to move to the right a little bit? You can see the Parks Avenue and Bruzki Drive intersection initially had raised median crossing that intersection. So we were going to limit movements to Bruzki and Parks to right in, right out only. And that was to help take care of some of the queues we are seeing and the traffic backups, especially of people on forty-three wanting to turn left on the highway sixty-one. As we move further down the corridor, we are carrying two lanes through. Uh, you see the intersection to Winona Health did not change very much. Again, turn lanes are provided and we see an expanded pavement section. Same types of concerns here with pedestrians and cyclists and folks that aren't in cars as at the sixty-one intersection. Just not as dramatic because there's not quite as much pavement to be dealt with. Moving further into town along Mankato. There's the Front Neck Drive intersection. Uh, and you'll note that both the the green and red circles at the middle of that intersection mean that's a signalized intersection. So to handle traffic and maintain a relatively smooth flow of cars and vehicles through the intersections, we would have had to put signals at the riverbank and at the front neck and you'll see it's Sarnia as well. So again, a fairly traditional layout at Front Neck and then we continue down to Sarnia. And there would have been a signalized intersection here as well. You see the free right turn from forty-three to go west on Sarnia, stayed there. And we also kept the right turn lane from Sarnia onto forty-three in place. I can tell you, one of the concerns we had with this was the right turners off Sarnia onto forty-three that want to turn left on Front Neck Drive. Really create an unsafe moving movement for vehicles because they need to get over and get over again in a very short space. So that was one of the concerns we had with this layout type. That's kind of it for the traditional layout. Is there anything that the folks want to ask a question about before we look at the roundabout layout?
Oh.
Yes.
I was just going to ask, um, the colors are, because I'm on my phone, it's very small. Is the purple suggested to be walkway sidewalks and?
Yes.
And the
And the tan on the other side is trail.
Okay, and the pink is like a median on this one, like a non-crossable median.
Yes, the red is is raised median. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Dale?
Yes.
Did you consider a roundabout at Sarnia with the with the lights at the other intersections?
We did. That that's kind of where the whole roundabout conversation started. You know, Sarnia has been a an on-again, off-again topic of conversation between the city and Mindot for a roundabout location for years. So we did know that we wanted to look at roundabouts there. Something else that should be noted is it's hard to see on the layout, but the outfall from Lake Winona that crosses under Mankato Avenue here is the structure is very old. It's an old box culvert that uh, is deteriorating pretty badly. It's it's not unsafe at this point, but there's no doubt that we want to replace it. So that's going to throw a little bit of a curve into our construction staging and making sure that we maintain traffic under construction. But just an item to note that that box culvert will be replaced. All right. Anything else on this layout? Any questions?
Al, here I have a question.
Sure.
On the Sarnia-Mankato, you mentioned the box culvert. What about the city's sewage lines that come out of the lift station that's in that location? Are they impacted by any of these designs going forward?
Good question. They are not. That was one of the things we identified very early is the lift station that had just been rebuilt in that location and we wanted to make sure that we did not impact any of those pressure mains at all. So
Thank you.
remain untouched.
Good. Thank you.
So I mentioned the Mankato and Sarnia roundabout. We we had discussions about that. And it's kind of interesting how this layout evolved was we went from talking about one roundabout to somebody said, well, maybe we should look at one at forty-three and sixty-one at Mankato and sixty-one because reduced speeds uh, and the increased safety from a roundabout at this intersection that I mentioned Mindot is concerned about. So we looked at a roundabout there and and it operated well. And so someone said, well, if we have roundabouts at both ends of the corridor, let's take a look at the two intersections in the middle as well. Uh, so we put everything together. We developed models to look at how the traffic will move. And lo and behold, the corridor with four roundabouts is, in our minds, the the route that we ought to be pursuing. Couple of things now here, looking at roundabouts. At the sixty-one intersection, the big, a very big factor is that roundabouts greatly reduce high-speed crashes. Study after study that's been done in the US shows that crash severity drops dramatically with the construction of roundabouts. So that was a big plus for a roundabout here. If we look at traffic queues, roundabout corridor has shorter queues, less delays than waiting at intersections. You're continuously moving. Now, that doesn't mean that you may not come to a roundabout and have to stop temporarily. But because traffic is always moving, roundabouts tend to have shorter queues and that's the case with this one. Traffic flow and access needs. I'm sure you all know that the highway sixty-one access to Fleet Farm will be changing this year. So that's going to be what's called a three-quarters in, three-quarters out. So people coming down sixty-one west to east will be able to get into Fleet Farm, but people leaving Fleet Farm will not be able to turn left on the highway sixty-one. We wanted to restrict some of those movements to improve the safety of that intersection. With that, some of those movements that couldn't be made were actually very well handled in a roundabout. People who want to leave Fleet Farm and go toward La Crosse, simply take a right, go around the roundabout and then head down toward La Crosse. So that the roundabout actually helps the operations at that intersection for Fleet Farm. Pedestrian issues, again, here you can see the purple is the sidewalk, the yellow is ten-foot trail. Every leg and every quadrant of the roundabout intersection includes trails. So we've done everything we could to make sure that this is as pedestrian and bicycle friendly as possible. One of the things I personally really like about moving through a roundabout as a pedestrian is that you have shorter distances to cross moving traffic and traffic is moving more slowly. So you can see, uh, if you were leaving Perkins and you wanted to get across the road to the west, you have to cross one lane of traffic, twenty feet of pavement, then you get to take refuge in a raised median. Then you cross two lanes. Again, you have refuge in a raised median. And then finally, you cross one lane again to get to that northwest quadrant. Think of what it looked like when it was a traditional intersection. There was probably eighty feet of pavement to cross all in one shot. So this configuration really helps for those pedestrians and bicyclists. Let's see, it's sixty-one. That's the bulk of it. I I will also mention that when we looked at extending this layout south of sixty-one to make sure that we could accommodate all the traffic and and get them into the correct lanes for moving through the roundabout. We found out that QuickTrip was planning to expand their facilities. We've had individual meeting with QuickTrip and they are very happy with this layout and like the way that it will work with their expanded operations. Okay, Kevin, let's move over to Bruzki and Parks. And George, here is your answer. With the roundabout configuration and looking at what's going on, we were able to provide left turn movements from forty-three onto Parks and left turn movements from forty-three onto Bruzki. So there are movements that are made and allowed, which will allow people to get in either coming from sixty-one onto Bruzki or heading south towards sixty-one to get onto Bruzki fairly easily. The movement that is restricted here is if you're leaving Bruzki and you want to turn left to get to highway sixty-one. That the raised median in the middle will not allow you to do that. So it won't take people long to figure out. All you have to do is turn right. Go to the next roundabout, go around the roundabout and make your way back to highway sixty-one. Very convenient and it improves the safety dramatically. So we are allowing Bruzki and Parks to have turning movements off forty-three, but restricted to left turns only.
Dale, George here.
Hi, George.
Have you met with the the businesses there as well, to the hotels in Severson and the fleet farms on this?
We have not had one-on-ones with them yet. We literally are just finishing up. We we had a lot, a lot. I mean, a lot of discussion with Mindot Geometrics on the proper way to design that center median and those left turners because we want to make sure the trucks can get through and everything else. So we don't end up with issues. But we've not had any one-on-one meetings with those folks yet. In addition to the QuickTrip, though, we have had one-on-one meeting with Winona Health and with the the new Burger King. People that the owners that are going to be moving into the target parking lot. So we're going to continue public engagement. This whole COVID things has made it a little bit more challenging. But we certainly want to get out there, George, and talk to everybody about what's planned.
This is Chad, George. I I I have spoken to Josh and via email and have made aware, made him aware of this change. Of course, he was pleased with it. So he didn't see the need for a meeting right now. But we're more than willing to meet with any of the the businesses if they if they do want to meet about it. So just see how that goes moving forward.
Thank you. Like I say, it looks here like there's a lot more better access to these businesses than what there was before. So thank you for looking at that.
And I'm so sorry, Dale, can you go back to the previous slide just for a second? I didn't realize we weren't I didn't realize we're going to move so quick. I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Or maybe just one.
Sure.
When you say previous slide, you mean the
The sixty-one intersection with the roundabout, because right now we're just at the, I can't move it back, only you can. So when I'm looking at this, just so I understand the colors.
Yes.
Green is green space. And it looks like you're shifting the roadway significantly off its original track and losing kind of those left-hand merge lanes like off of the QuickTrip side. And so what's happening to the rest of the land that used to be pavement? Is it being turned into green? Is it staying pavement? What is happening to it?
Yeah, usually like if you look at that free right turn, when you're coming up to sixty-one from forty-three right there with the red X's in it.
Yeah.
So pavement like that will be demolished and it will be returned to grass. So regular old roadside ditch. Only the pavement that you see, you know, the the yellows and the tan and the pink, only that will be the new pavement. All the old pavement will be removed and blended into the existing topography.
Okay, and then up in the upper, I guess, if I'm looking at the screen, the upper right-hand corner, there's like a blue
Yep. Yep. Stormwater detention.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
We would have needed to do that with a traditional layout as well, just state rules.
No, of course. I just, I I thought that's what it was, but you know, it looks like a perfect oval, which just wanted to make sure I was right. Going, so it makes sense.
And that blue, that blue oval is very preliminary. We just wanted to see if we had to do water treatment. It just to make sure that we had space for that. It depends on how much new pavement we have compared to the existing, whether or not we need to provide upon, but we just wanted to make sure we we had room for it one way or another if we had to, so.
Oh, go ahead, Pam.
Yes, yes, I I I just had a joke comment for a moment. I thought you were going to be expanding the swimming pool, the Y.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, go ahead.
Regarding, you mentioned that people exiting Fleet Farm would be exiting to the right. And then to continue on down river toward La Crosse, they would come up and go around the roundabout and then swing south.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Have you accommodated? Have you looked at the increased traffic on that roundabout from people simply making that one, one little move?
Yes.
Seems like that's would be very busy.
Yep, yep, we have, we have run those numbers. We've been getting as much updated numbers as as we can, so we have accommodated that, Pam, just to answer your question. And we've also asked Burger King if they could give us some projected numbers, because we want to make sure that we're, you know, we're planning for those in the corridor as well.
Al here with a couple of questions. I know our time is short, so I'll try to make it as general as possible. My first question is on speed and how that's going to be reduced or changed in this whole area. And my second question revolves around winter and snow and. The limits that sometimes present themselves when when plows are needed. To clear intersections such as the one at Brewski, you know, if those left turn lanes are narrow or. The access are narrowed by snow or anything, how does that affect the whole performance of the system?
Right, the speeds again will be slowed. If you just think of yourself driving through on one of these lanes. You can see it's a very curvilinear layout with the use of roundabouts, because we have to use deflection curves. To slow people down that are coming into the the roundabouts. So we we expect to see general overall speeds throughout the corridor decrease. Which will make it more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. That's one of the concerns we had. And it'll also help with another traffic related problem. It's dangerous when you have a big variation in speeds, so you have some people going slow and you have some people going fast. Just the layout of this corridor will minimize the differences in people's speeds through the corridor. Thereby making it safer.
I'm talking about speeds prior to the intersection. In other words, part of the reason the Fleet Farm intersections has been. So difficult is because speeds generally, people that are going westbound or, you know, northbound. On highway sixty one don't are aren't aware of how congested that area can be if they come up there on speed.
Yeah. Kevin, can you drop down to that intersection?
I think even if you zoom, just zooming out too, you can see, that's why the, that's the main. Reason why highway sixty one is kind of curving. Curving so much in advance, when you, as soon as you leave the Fleet Farm intersection, it starts to curve to the right. So when we design roundabouts, we start with a a slider curve that. Kind of forces traffic to slowly reduce speed. And then as you approach the roundabout closer and closer, the curves start to tighten up a little bit. So you kind of transition people from a higher speed into a slower speed. So by the time they get to the roundabout, they they more or less have to be slowed down. We just don't, we want to avoid like having an abrupt curve right at the roundabout that they would have to, you know, stop quickly or reduce their speed fast. So we slowly transition them into that. So that's kind of how we get at that, the speed reduction always in advance.
But it's still at fifty five miles per hour.
This, the the actual posting of the speed limit would not change.
Yeah, that's my point.
That's, that's, that's a concern. That's, that's the concern that I've heard from a lot of people is coming into the roundabout at fifty five miles per hour. Seemed like it'd be a lot safer if they were coming in at forty five.
Dale, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I know this is a Minna project, it's a state highway. How much say does the city of Winona have in this?
What, as far as cost?
Two roundabouts, not four. I mean, do we have any of that? How much say do we have?
Right, right. Well, Chad, you want to talk about municipal consent at this point?
Yeah, I mean, we we want to work with you as we we go through the project. That's why we're meeting with you tonight, too, but. You know, we do have to, we will be coming to you for municipal consent. So we'll present the layout to you. We give you our, you know, the expected cost estimate. Any, you know, a rough or the best, I guess it's a, it's called a good faith cost estimate. And it would be, you know, what your expected cost would be as a part of this project. And then what the Minna cost would be. And then we also give you a schedule at that time. So yeah, we would, we will be talking about municipal consent later this year. But, you know, we we want to coordinate with you along the way, too, so there's no surprises once we get to that point.
Just a reminder to everybody, we have about five more minutes and then we're going to need to wrap it up.
Okay, well, I'll move through the rest of the corridor fairly quickly. We get down to Front Neck and River Bend, you can see two more roundabouts. And again, you'll note the the use of curves for traffic coming into those roundabouts. Help to slow people down and make sure that we're keeping speeds uniform and safe. Again, and Winona Health has seen this layout and has no problem with the roundabout. So we were, we'll continue to work with them on construction staging and everything else, knowing that they have to have safe access throughout the project, but.
Dale, wait, can I, can I ask one question? I just, if I understand correctly, the reason you're recommending these. Well, I knew we were talking about the one at Mankato, so I'm putting that aside, but. The reason you're recommending the two in the middle is because if you had one on one end of the corridor and one on the other and then stop signs. We'd have major backups of traffic where the traffic is moving freely at the two intersections and then stopped in the middle. Is that why we're looking at four roundabouts instead of just two or one?
Right, no, it's consistency of of driver expectations as you move through the corridor. When you get in and start looking at the roundabouts and and you're right with the speeds and the queues and everything else. It can be a challenge. We we would have had to have signals at these two locations. And that did two things. One was it created the need to then blend roundabouts and signals in a relatively short corridor. Which created some issues. And another thing that. We've noted that and the people at our public meetings were very happy to hear is that at a traditional intersection. It may be illegal to do the U turn. So looking at access to businesses to, you know, the the drive up pharmacy at Winona Health, the Dairy Queen, to the YMCA, to you name it. Where one access changes, it's easy to get to the next roundabout and turn around and go the other way again.
And we did, I mean, looking at our traffic model and reviewing, reviewing all of the analysis, we really do feel that. You know, it's not just because we have have a roundabout at the end, which is one, you know, one reason, but. It's also they do function better and they operate better with with less delay, so.
Yep. So here you can see, like the previous ones, there's a roundabout at Front Neck and then a roundabout at Sarnia. One of the things I wanted to point out on the Sarnia roundabout is we had. Lengthy discussions about this one as well, and we're concerned about what might happen. When trains are blocking Mankato to the north of this intersection. So we developed and we actually changed our layout to include a dedicated through lane on the outside. You'll see that. That's where the queue will be able to back up when traffic is stopped for railroad crossings. Still allowing people who are northbound on Mankato to take a left and go westbound on Sarnia. So that handles that concern as well. Again, when we had our, when we had our bike walkarounds and our. When we met on site and walked around with with bikes and pedestrians and other folks, our pop up sessions. This intersection was a concern. And the folks we've talked to, once they've seen what this is, like the roundabout layout as well, so. I'm sort of at the end of it and I know we're running out of time. I'll just say, having worked in Winona for decades now. When we started this project, I was honestly concerned about the pushback that we might get from the public and from the businesses on the roundabouts. But the folks that have been talking to us so far, it's been pleasant, pleasantly surprising that it's. There's overwhelming support for this roundabout corridor from the folks that we've talked to, so. I I think it's a good concept. I think it's the right concept and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Dale George here. What is the city expense in this project is, you know, dollars and cents?
That's yet to be determined, George. Minna's got a very established cost participation policy. So we'll take a look at. Stormwater contribution, sidewalks, lighting, all of those different things. But that's one of the next things we have in line is once we have this layout hammered and decided it's what we're moving ahead with. Then we'll start looking at the costs and as soon as we can, we'll work on developing what the anticipated Winona city cost is. Because we know that you guys need time to plan to be able to pay the bill.
Thank you.
Final question?
Council member Scholmeyer here. Dale or Kevin, why, why is it that we can't? Slow sixty highway sixty one traffic down to forty five mile per hour. Yeah, roundabout sixty one forty three.
Chad, you wanted to go with this? I mean, as far as. Speed limits and speed studies?
You know, we've found time and time again, you know, if. It's not how, you know, we can put signs out there to to try to slow people down with signs, but. You know, it's really, it it's, it's the environment, how people drive the road, it's the. Geometrics that control how fast people drive the corridor. So, you know, by by posting a lower speed limit, it would not necessarily actually lower the speed that people are driving. The other thing that we have found when we've tried that is. It does create speed variability more because certain people are trying to. You know, they're driving the conditions of the road, the geometrics, and other people are actually following the signs. So there's that speed variability that is also a concern with that. I'm not the traffic engineer, so I mean, we do, we do speed studies typically after projects are complete. So I mean, I'm not the one that's going to make the final decision on what what the speed limit out there is, but. In general, that's, that's kind of how we set speed limits.
I think just one thing to note in terms of the speeds, particularly on highway sixty one. The design of the curves of highway sixty one prior to the roundabout. Will require vehicles to be at twenty five miles per hour by the time they hit the crosswalks. They physically can't go faster or they would, they would run off the road. And so that's what those curves do. So we will reduce those speeds when people get to that roundabout.
I was going to make one last comment. I know we're done, but. I've gotten a surprising number of people that are in favor of this and a few that are opposed mostly because of the highway sixty one intersection. Because it slows traffic down too much. And so. I think the very opposite of what some of the other council people are saying is the concern of most of the drivers that when they watch the video. They see that it slows down and they're visualizing their process flowing. Instead of moving quickly through the intersection, but I think your argument would be that they're not stopping now.
Right.
Actually, they're moving more quickly through the intersection because they're not actually stopping for any length of time.
Right, yep. The average time to move through that intersection will get better with a roundabout.
All right, on that note, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Dale back when he was working for Paul.
So now we just leave this meeting and join with the other meeting?
It has the same address, though.
So we just hang out here for fifteen minutes? I will do that.
You gotta, he's gotta get people linked in if they got a problem.
No, so.
This room will be remaining. This is Brad, the IT coordinator. Everybody can be staying in the room for the. Pending city council meeting at six thirty.
But Brad, this.
Ten seconds. Six thirty, mayor.
All right, six thirty, I call the meeting to order. We'll stand and say the fledge of allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the flag. It states America. And to the republic for which it stands.
Under God.
Liberty and justice.
All right. I have a statement I need to read here. At six thirty and I've called the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call. Pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you are asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call. So each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if anytime a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so you are easily identified. The public will be allowed to speak during the designated public hearings. You'll be asked to state your name and address before you make your comments. The public is not allowed to speak during other agenda items unless you have a request before the council. And the mayor has given you permission to speak. We also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and don't engage in conversation with each other. I'll now ask the city clerk to take the roll call. Members of the city council are are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call. Please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlay.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Aiden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
I have a. I'd like to recognize the service of two individuals who retired on April thirtieth. Carrie Putzier worked for the city for forty two years in the finance office. She started in nineteen seventy seven as a data coordinator and most recently, her title was accounting clerk. She was responsible for processing accounts payable and accounts receivable checks as well as assisting. With payroll data entry and other miscellaneous tasks within the finance department. Carrie attended the finance front window for many years and helped customers with bus passes, pet licensing. And water bill payments. The other retiree is Dwayne Chadmore. He worked as a firefighter for twenty seven years. Dwayne started employment in nineteen ninety two with a part time firefighter and was promoted to full time within two months. Achieved the rank of captain in twenty eleven. Dwayne was known in the department for his technical knowledge and skills as a firefighter. And was also a jack of all trades when it came to fixing and repairing items at the firehouse. His previous work experience as a plumber made him the go to guy when working on pumps and valves on the fire truck. The city appreciates the services of these individuals and we wish them a long, healthy and happy retirement. I'd also like to remind the public that on May seventeenth, filing begins through. June second for city offices. There are three council seats and mayor seat. Up this year and to consider. Throwing your hat in the ring. Let's see, I'd also like to make a special, or say a special thanks to, again, to the city staff. And everybody in the community that's doing so much to keep this COVID nineteen in check. We've got a lot of people working very hard on this and the public, I think, is doing a great job at keeping. Self isolated and. Distancing themselves and wearing masks and let's keep it up. And also want to mention, too, that the railroad switch warning light on Mankato Avenue, both going north and south. Is now up and operating. I haven't seen it working yet, but I understand it works well and. Glad to see that project finally completed. And we will be pulling one item from the agenda, agenda item five point seven. The donation of a retaining wall section, so that's been pulled. And with that, I'll ask the city manager if he has any comments. And with that, I'll, uh, ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I'd wanna recognize today is International Firefighters' Day. I appreciate all the work, uh, firefighters here in Winona and across the country and around the world. And also to let everyone know that Midwest Music Fest has transformed into a virtual fest that'll be happening this Friday and Saturday. Be over fifty acts, plus lots of other programming. Uh, if you would like to, uh, participate in this, there'll be a stage hosted on Midwest Music Fest and one on Tree Dome. More information can be found at MidwestMusicFest.org or the new Winona Arts website, WinonaArts.com. Thank you, your honor.
Okay. Thank you.
We already called, we'll also move to a public hearing. At a point, it is the Waters Edge Apartments' application for assistant, item two-point-one. It is a public hearing.
And I'd like to just state again that for each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, and then I will ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address, and again, given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I'll call three times for public comments, and once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the city council. And council, if you wish to make a motion, state the following: I, in your name, move to approve, uh, this attached resolution or proposed ordinance. To second the motion, state your name and, uh, say second the motion. With that, we will, uh, begin the, uh, public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open. And, uh, Lucy, there we go.
Mayor, council, this is Nick Larson with the Community Development. Um, the public hearing for this evening has gathered input for the proposal for Waters Edge Apartments to request tax abatement to develop forty-one workforce housing rental units. Staff in Baker Tilly, which is the city's financial consultants, have reviewed, uh, the pro forma and the development costs of the Water Edge Apartment proposal. We have agreed that there is a financial gap, development of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four. Minnesota statute authorizes tax abatement to encourage economic and housing developments. True, if the tax abatement is approved, the developer will continue to pay the current property taxes, and will be reimbursed or refunded the dollar amount of the current tax, um, relative to the post-development value. Representing Commonwealth and Waters Edge Apartments, I believe there is Kelly and Dan also to answer any questions or concerns of the mayor or council.
Any questions for Nick, my council members? Or anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak?
Mayor?
Yes?
George here.
Yes?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
A question for Nick. Now, this development, they went last year to get other assistance, I believe, uh, from the state or from the federal government, and of course, they were denied that, and then coming back now again, uh, does this help kind of guarantee that they will be able to get the other financing that they're, uh, seeking?
Last year and this year, they are applying to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for an allocation of housing tax credits, and it's a very competitive program, and with these applications, if the applicant has community support such as TIF or tax abatement, it does increase the value of that application, and they score more points, which gives them a greater chance of being allocated these tax credits, to then sell these tax credits for equity to begin the project.
And then what is the difference between TIF and tax abatement in regards to this project?
Well, the tax abatement, well, uh, the request is to only abate the city portion of the taxes, where if we were to pursue TIF, it would be the city portion, county, and the school district. And upon the, uh, evaluation of Waters Edge pro forma and their total development costs, staff and Baker Tilly felt that to fill the financial gap, simply tax abatement would fulfill that role rather than having a, a bigger ask in collecting more tax through a TIF type of program.
Okay, and how many years is this for?
We believe with the analysis that the one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four would be filled within eleven, an eleven-year period. Per state statute, and how the resolution is written, it would be no more than fifteen years, or no, no more than the dollar amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four. Um, again, we believe it would be taken care of within an eleven-year period, but not been able to predict the future and what the property markets are gonna do. We decided to go a little bit safer to help the project out by going out to the max of fifteen years per state statute.
Thank you, no more questions.
Anybody else wish to speak? I'll ask one more time, anybody else wish to speak?
Mayor, this is James J. Verkota, fourteen-oh-six Highland Drive, um, chair of the Housing Task Force, and as I spoke last year when this came up, um, I would speak highly in favor of this. This was one of the areas of housing that was very badly needed and was the least, um, had the least chance of having outside investors come into it. When this opportunity came up, um, I thought it was a great opportunity for us, and I still think it is, and I would, uh, speak very highly in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
This is Kelly with Commonwealth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I tried speaking earlier, and I don't know if I forgot to take myself off of mute, we just wanted to say Dan and I are on the line from Commonwealth, wanted to say thank you for the consideration. Uh, we have made a couple changes this year, and this tax abatement would count as a local contribution. It would allow us to score an additional two points on the application. Um, with a couple of the changes that Minnesota Housing has made to their scoring, it scores eight points higher than it did last year with minimal changes to the project, so we feel it'll be very competitive going in this round.
Okay, thank you. Again, anybody, okay, go ahead. Is there somebody wishing to speak? Okay, I guess not. Well, I'm gonna call the public hearing, uh, close, and, uh, open this up now for the council to consider.
I, Michelle Alexander would move to approve the resolution and accept the three attachments.
I would. I would, a second.
Okay, I think I, uh, heard Michelle make the motion, and Eileen, okay. All right, well, uh, any further discussion? We'll move to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Councilman Moller, or woman.
Aye.
Alexander.
Oh, my screen is frozen, are you asking for my vote? It's aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
On to the next public hearing, item two-point-two is the Bradford Development Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request. And I believe Carlos is making a presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council, can you see the blue slide on your screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, for this, uh, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request, I have a brief, uh, brief presentation, and then the developer, uh, is on the line as well, uh, and has comments related to the amendment request. The request relates to three acres of land at two-two-eight-three-nine County Road seventeen. The proposal is to change it from a low-density land use designation to an urban residential land use designation. Two-two-eight-three-nine County Road seventeen is located to the south of the Treetop subdivision, directly adjacent to the main entrance of the Bridges Golf Course. It's highlighted in red on your screen. The three acres of property that are the subject of the amendment request are on the overall nine-point-three-five acre bublets annexation, annexation land, which is part of the, uh, next agenda item. On the three acres, the proposal is to facilitate development of a thirty-six-unit senior co-op building, uh, named Cedar Brook. The developer of the proposed Cedar Brook development is Bradford Development. Bradford Development, uh, constructed the Willowbrook, uh, co-op that currently exists at fourteen-twenty, uh, East Valley Road in the city. This is a close-up of two-two-eight-three-nine County Road seventeen. The overall, uh, bublets annexation request, which is the next agenda item, uh, is the area that's outlined in black, that's approximately nine-point-three-five acres. The subject of this request is the area in blue, which is approximately three acres. The approximate co-op building location is outlined here, and you can see immediately to the east of the, uh, proposed co-op building location is a future development area. This area is not part of the amendment request, it would remain designated low-density, and in the future would support development of single-family homes or twin homes that would serve as a buffer between the proposed building and existing homes along County Road seventeen. So the west of the, uh, subject property is land that historically has been used for pasture, but currently does not have an agricultural use, uh, is a valley area which contains bluffland-type, uh, topography. This is a concept site plan, uh, for the site. You can see an access drive coming off of County Road seventeen in this general location, going into a parking area here, and the proposed building location. The proposed building is, uh, four stories, um, with a underground parking facility as well, uh, be located at the bottom of a valley, so we're talking about development at the bottom of a valley, not on top of a bluff. Again, you can see that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer of undeveloped area between the proposed building and current structures, uh, on County Road seventeen. The building is proposed, uh, for thirty-six units, again, four stories with underground parking, with a total, uh, height of fifty-one feet, nine inches, it would have a flat roof, so that fifty-one foot, nine inches is to the top of the structure. The building, in accordance, does not match the surrounding area, which is low-density homes, uh, the proposed building is high-density and is of a larger scale, uh, than the surrounding area. Uh, but there are three characteristics of the proposed development that mitigate the overall impacts to the immediate area. The first, as I mentioned, is that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer between buildings and existing homes on seventeen. The second is an overall five-hundred-foot distance between the proposed building and County Road seventeen, and the third is the building's location towards the back of a valley surrounded by bluffs, making the height of the building less imposing. Again, we have a close-up of the proposed area in blue, you have the approximate building location. Highlighted in orange is that two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer area. Again, you have five-hundred feet approximately between where the building would be located and County Road seventeen. In addition to that distance, you have the existing structures along the road, which reduce the potential for visibility, uh, when you are driving down the highway. So the west of the proposed site is bluffland area, um, that would, uh, remain undeveloped in the short term, and has steep slopes not suitable for general development. Overall, staff, uh, sees the setting for the proposed building as somewhat similar to the, uh, forty-nine-unit apartment building named Winona Arms that currently exists in Knott Valley. The height of this building in Knott Valley that currently exists is approximately forty feet, uh, at the peak. The Cedar Brook building that is proposed is, again, about fifty, uh, feet, fifty-one foot, nine inches, so you can picture an additional story on top of this, uh, existing structure that we have in Knott Valley. Similar to the proposed building, Winona Arms is located towards the back of a valley with the bluff in the background, you can see how the bluff, um, helps to, uh, reduce the overall, uh, composition of the height of the, uh, largest structure on the surrounding development, which is single-family homes, uh, twin homes, and a church. Here's an overall view, uh, aerial view of the Winona Arms apartment building in Knott Valley. Uh, you can see that surrounding it, you have single-family homes to the north, town homes to the east, a church, uh, to the south, and single-family homes to the west. Single-family homes to the west are two-hundred-and-three feet away from the building, uh, single-family homes in the north, hundred-and-fifteen foot, and the town homes to the east, a hundred feet. Again, the buffer area, uh, between the proposed building, um, on the bublets land and the existing structures around on County Road seventeen is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet. You have a greater distance, um, in the proposed location than you do, uh, for the, uh, Winona Arms building in Knott Valley. Terms of public comments related to this request, um, there was concern about removal of trees and brush on surrounding land. Um, in response to that, staff, uh, walked the site on April twenty-second. Although there was a significant amount of trees and foliage removed, the grass and the soil were intact with no visible signs of erosion. The brush piles that do remain, I consulted with the fire department in this case, and they did not see a hazard in the short term, but in the long term, it would perhaps be beneficial to burn these piles. And according to the property owner, the reason that so much, uh, foliage and trees were removed is oriental bittersweet, uh, infestation in the area. There were also concerns about, uh, traffic resulting from the development and, uh, pedestrian access. Uh, related to that, I consulted with the Winona County Highway Engineer, and he noted that Highway seventeen and the roundabout, um, are able to handle the additional, uh, traffic, uh, that would result as, uh, as a result of this development, and also that the need for a turn lane on Highway seventeen would be addressed during future review of this proposal, uh, if it proceeds. In response to pedestrian access, uh, in future review, staff would recommend a sidewalk along the access drive that would connect the proposed co-op building to the entrance of the golf course. Again, the crest, request in front of council tonight is to change the land use designation. Uh, the land use designation is what the comp plan says, uh, should guide, uh, future land use in the city. Currently, the subject property is designated as low-density, um, and it's in the city's urban expansion area, so it's land directly adjacent to, uh, the city's existing boundaries, but land that is outside of the city's current, uh, municipal boundary. The proposed land use designation is urban residential, uh, and urban residential really, uh, is a classification that fits better for high-density development in more of the core area of Winona, but this is the only category that we have in the comprehensive plan that would support the development that is proposed. On April thirteenth, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and recommended approval five to three. The Planning Commission made the following findings. First of all, the amendment facilitates residential development, which meets the current and future needs of Winona's population in accordance with the housing section of the comprehensive plan. Second, since the comp plan was adopted in two thousand and seven, sewer and water utilities were installed adjacent to the subject property in County Road seventeen. And third, the potential use is supported by the urban residential designation will be buffered from existing single-family homes by a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer that supports future, uh, low-density residential development. The commission also recommended and adopted two, um, record, uh, conditions on the approval, the first being that all approvals, uh, related to construct a thirty-six-unit co-op senior living facility shall be obtained by May twenty-twenty-one, and number two, if that condition is not met, the comprehensive plan change shall be null and void. So, um, if this does not, uh, move forward all the way through the approvals process and happen, um, by, uh, the date that you see under number one, uh, the comprehensive chain, comprehensive plan change that is being requested would revert back to low-density. Additional approvals needed, this is really the first step in a, uh, lengthy, uh, public review process related to the proposed development. The second is, uh, annexation, uh, that annexation is the next agenda item on council's, uh, agenda tonight. We also will take a look at if it proceeds zoning, uh, potential variance for building height, subdivision, site plan, and during these processes, uh, that's where we'll take a look at development details such as height, uh, ingress and egress, uh, if, uh, turn lane is, uh, needed on County Road seventeen, for example. Also, utility. If a turn lane is needed on County Road 17, for example, also utility connections, et cetera. Tonight, council options. The first would be to approve the request with a motion to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and introduce the resolution that is included in your packets for approval. Because this is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, a supermajority of five votes is required. You could also deny the request. In this case, specific reasons should be given, and a motion should be made to postpone further consideration and bring findings for denial to the next meeting. And you could table the request if more information is needed. Thank you.
Council members, questions for Carlos?
Something I heard Carlos say, this is Pam Iden speaking. Yes, Carlos, did you say that this was the only category in our comprehensive plan that would allow this kind of development? And so that's one reason that we're calling it, we're calling it, what, urban residential?
Correct. The urban residential category, it's a bit of a misnomer, but we don't have another classification or another category that would fit this type of development in this setting.
I guess my comment is, my question was because I don't feel that this development really fits that category very well. I understand that the city has a need for this kind of housing and that and that we've gone ahead with this, but I don't find that it really fits the urban residential category in that there are no sidewalks, there's no connection to town, there are no connections to the services and shopping. I don't find that the buffer between the development, proposed development and the highway mitigates the, mitigates the fact that it's four stories tall. I don't, there are many things about this that I find that are unseemly. And besides that, I feel that we are annexing land that I think poses a danger of increased runoff.
Can I make a comment at this time quickly? This is City Attorney Chris Hood. If, you should wait on deliberations until after the public hearing is concluded to make your comments. This should really be for questions of staff?
Thank you, Chris. I forgot where I was.
I'm going to open the public hearing, which I hadn't done yet, and ask if there's members of the public that wish to speak.
Hi, this is Melissa Nelson with Bradford Development. We're at 501 North Riverfront Drive in Mankato, 56001. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time and consideration tonight. I just wanted to go over a few items. This would be the fifth senior housing cooperative that we have developed. A little bit about senior housing cooperatives is that I think the main appeal is the ownership, maintenance, free factor for 62-plus. It's a huge selling point. We've developed in Mankato, Northfield, obviously Winona Willowbrook Cooperative, and then in Black River Falls most recently. I think in regards to that setting, we did look at a number of other parcels and felt pretty restricted as far as what this type of audience and what these buyers want. More of a rural setting, more what they're used to right now. Kind of a country feel, the wooded rural. The golf course is obviously a nice amenity right there within a few miles from town. Easy on and off to County Road 17. There's, they don't produce a lot of traffic. Normally, you know, a 36-unit building will have one vehicle per unit in generally that leave during low-traffic times, just to address that. The demand has been like no other that I've seen with very, very little marketing efforts. We have 41 on the reservation list of the 36 units. And I just wanted to touch on the HUD program that we use to construct these buildings. The interest rates are incredibly low, and these types of buildings are wonderful neighbors for the surrounding neighbors in that area. Very well-respected properties and people. I did do some outreach to and sent a letter to the neighbors of that area. I did get one response back, a very neutral opinion, very nice gentleman that was, he just kept it neutral, but just wanted to learn a little bit more about the cooperative concept. So I just wanted to make sure that they have the most accurate site plan and material and know that they can contact us should they have any questions, concerns, or there's always rumors that go about, so to get the most clear and accurate information out there to them. And the last thing is just mainly with, you know, multifamily housing. This is about the most ideal form of it that you can look for. You know, touching on that good neighbor and how well they respect their property. And it's, we see it to be a very nice setting, sitting back along that bluff line without affecting the bluff. We don't, we won't be in that bluff area, we'll be off of it. So just wanted to note that, and I can take any questions if anybody has any further on the cooperative concept. Thank you.
Any questions for?
Mayor George here.
Yes?
Lisa, on this one that would, if passed, would be built. When you talk about underground parking, is that going to be the ground level of it? Or is that going to be below-ground level?
It is below-ground, the underground parking.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for the developer? If not, we'll open it up to anybody else that might want to speak. If so, state your name and address.
I have a question. Hi, my name is Becky, and I live at 22769 County Road 17. So I'm just two houses down from the proposed site.
You need to come closer to your speaker.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. So I was saying, my name is Becky Brewer, and I live two houses down from the proposed site. I'm at 22769 County Road 17. And I apologize, I didn't get to get questions or letters in because I'm homeschooling my children and working full-time. Melissa, I was curious, it looks like on the, on the plan, there's also a large parking area. And is that needed in addition to the underground parking?
It is. We'd go off of the city's recommendation for how many are required for that area for guests and a potential for a second vehicle. That does, in every once in a while, there are a couple of the extra vehicles. So then they would park outside as well.
Okay. I'm curious if the council would consider a new speed limit if this were to be passed? Because I live here, and it's 45 miles an hour. And I feel like with increased traffic and with small children and the golf course that maybe someday that this could be considered a 35-mile-an-hour zone? Because it is, there's a lot of traffic and it's pretty fast.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other comments or questions?
Not at the moment, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? If so, speak up and state your name and address.
I'm Allison Plummens. I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I live 23171 County Road 17. I'm approximately eight homes away from the future development. I think my comments would, I have one question for Melissa, which would be, I'm curious as to what other parcels you did look at in, within the Winona area. My other questions would be, why was this area picked over areas that are available that are already annexed into the city? I believe there's areas up on Garban Heights, Ridgewood, Highland Drive. There's an area at the end of Valley Oaks, and I think there's something out in Gilmore Valley and wondering if those had been explored. I also just am coming to terms with a four-story building along 17. I guess my feeling in comparison is that it is going to be as tall as four stories. There's the Holiday Inn Express, and also the apartment building that is on Mankato. And I'm also curious about the future buffer development area just within the neighbors that live right in that proximity. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but just in, or at this moment, but I'm just curious as to what is, are they going, there's going to be future homes there and how close they are going to be to the neighbors that live there already?
Melissa, do you want to address those questions?
Yeah, let's see, where do I start? So the other parcels that we looked at, I don't have addresses off the top of my head. We worked with the city of Winona to look at available properties. A lot of them that were in the city limits were not three acres, which we're looking for. Or the price tag was extremely high for some of the downtown locations that don't, it just can't divide it out and use the HUD program that we're using to create this affordable housing. It's pretty hard to get new construction to be affordable these days. But with that HUD program, it is an avenue that allows that. Maybe Carlos could help me a little bit if he recalls the other properties we've looked at. We've, we were certain, we were certainly not opposed to other parcels. We just were not having ones that fit the category that we look for when selling shares of a cooperative. And we were getting really good feedback on this location. I can't speak to the low-density buffer in between the cooperative and the single-family homes as we won't be developing that. But there's been talk of, you know, maybe patio homes or townhomes or something to phase into the larger building. But I do think with the bluff behind the building and with the building sitting as far back off of County Road 17 as it is, that it won't be as noticeable as like the hotel that you referred to that sits so close. So I do think that'll help. And then, of course, we are always open as a developer to discuss different landscaping ideas to, to just, we're opened and for all those types of discussions, if anyone has any more concerns about, about that. I'm sorry, what were, were there a couple other?
No.
Okay.
That answers, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll ask if there's anybody else that has, wants to make a comment or has a question. Speak up, name and address.
Mayor, this is Jim Recode again, 1406 Highland Drive. Again, speaking in regards to the housing task force, senior housing of this type was definitely identified as one of the things we wanted to attract to Winona. Based on the housing study, there's definitely the demand for this. And so I get, I guess I would once again speak in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
This is Fran Edstrom.
Hello, Fran.
Hi, 23089 BlackBerry Road. My land abuts the land that you're talking about. I have a question. You're talking about how this is affordable housing. What does that mean?
The buy-in prices for, it falls under HUD's affordable housing definition. Ownership and buy-in of the shares range from 108,000 to 154,000, which is roughly 40% of the actual value of the construction costs. So the master mortgage is insured by HUD. They will lock a nice low interest rate for 40 years. So it keeps the housing affordable over time. A good reference is Willowbrook Cooperative on East Burns Valley Road. That one opened in 2011. I believe that late rate lock was like 2.58% for 40 years on the master mortgage of the building. And share prices are extremely affordable to buy in and resale. So it kind of opens that category for 62 plus, sorry, 62-plus to be able to have one level living without having to, you know, when you get into new construction, we're looking, we're talking hundreds of thousands right now.
Okay. I have another question. Why are you calling it Cedar Creek when this is not Cedar Valley? Where there is a creek? And there's no creek where you are.
The, the name is Cedar Brook Cooperative.
There's no Brook either.
Well, we have, we're a Willowbrook Cooperative is our branding name. And so that's just a spin-off of that. We didn't want to stick with the same Willowbrook Cooperative because it just gets too confusing because they're completely independent entities. Once we develop and sell out, we step out of the project and we no longer have a tie to the building. It's all independently owned and operated by the members who live there.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Name and address. Speak up.
This is Leon Bowman, 22827 Garban Heights Road. I'm the Chair of Wilson Township, and I've got a few questions. This Bradford Development, now it's going, you're switching from low-density to urban residential. You know, you're putting a four-story building on it. You know, part of what you had in your land use plan is it's supposed to be, you know, it's supposed to be compatible with the neighborhood. A four-story is definitely not going to be compatible in that neighborhood. You gotta, you're talking about a 250-foot buffer zone that's going to be filled with twin homes. My, and then you've got, I read somewhere that when this goes in, they're only going to be taxing them on their three acres. What's wrong with, for the sewer and water? How come you're not doing the whole, the whole proposal that you're looking at annexing next? And you know, you look at this Willowbrook or Cedar Brook and the one in Knott Valley? This is not going to be anything like that because those are all surrounded by the city of Winona. These are going to be surrounded almost completely by Wilson Township. So those are just some of those things. Looking for a rural setting, I mean, we've got all kinds of them. You got Extend Ridgewood Drive on that, there's a whole open area back there, more than three acres. You got Highland Drive, big open field right across from Buck Drive up there. There's more than three acres there. You've got the Brenner Edition in, across from Spring Brook. You got the end of the valley at Valley Oaks. Those are, and you want a rural setting, those will all be fall into that rural setting. And then we have a slight question on, did you try for any tax abatement? I mean, the one we just got passed on, on the lake or on the river. I mean, the one we just got passed on, on the lake or on the river, they got a break. Did you work with community development to work with Bradford? Did you guys work together to look at other sites rather than to go for annexation? Those are just a few of my questions. I'll be back when we get to the next one. I'll shut off for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak?
This is Laurel Luttrell, I live at two, three, two, seven, three BlackBerry Road. I don't see any way that-
You get closer to your microphone, please.
I don't see any way that a four-story high-rise is going to fit in this area. I don't, it, it's just too tall. You show me the picture of the Winona at Arms Building. I don't think that looks good. And then you tell me there's going to be another level above that. I just don't see any way that that should get a variance for height. It's not going to fit in there. And if I wanted to live that close to the Winona Arms Building, I would have moved to Not Valley. But, you know, I moved to Wilson Township because I didn't want to live by a four-story high-rise. And I think that you should exhaust your options without annexation before annexing Wilson Township property. I, I just, there are multiple sites, as Mr. Bowman just stated, and I just don't support that. I don't see how you can call it high-density urban. It doesn't fit that category. It's not in, connected to any shopping. I mean, there's a restaurant, but there's no shopping, there's no sidewalks on County Road seventeen. There are no parks, there are just piles of dead trees. It's more than Oriental Bittersweet in those piles. There are full-grown trees in those piles. They can't walk over those piles of trees. So I, I just don't see it fitting the designation. I don't see a four-story high-rise fitting in the landscape. And I just think that you should look more closely at other options first.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, speak up.
Mayor Collins, this is Nick Larson. There's been a few comments and questions about city staff working with Bradford Development to identify other sites. Very early in the process, we did go through that process to match up with their housing product. Anything within the downtown area would not fit either with the land costs or with the parcel size for what you're looking for. Then in regards to some of these other sites that have been mentioned that are rural setting, when approaching the property or landowners, they weren't willing to sell or have a conversation about the selling price. And throughout that process, this is how this particular parcel came, came about for Bradford to look at.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Anybody else wish to speak? This is the time. Speak up, name and address. Is that Deborah Martin?
Hi, this is Marilyn and Tom Esden. We, we live at eight-twenty River Street, Dakota, Minnesota. We have put a deposit down on one of these units and we're looking, the, the land that they explained to us where it would be was very attractive. And it is one reason we were thinking about moving to Winona. That's all I want to say, we're very much in favor of the project.
Thank you, Marilyn.
This is Brad, the city Winona IT Coordinator. Just a very quick reminder for phone users, specifically if you're a cell phone or a landline, star six is to unmute as well as star six again to mute yourself if you're using a laptop, computer, some very similar. Generally, the mute button's on the bottom left. Just wanted to make that quick statement.
I'll keep asking, anybody else wish to speak? Want to make sure everybody that wants to speak gets a chance.
This is Melissa Nelson, one more time, Bradford Development, five-oh-one North Riverfront Drive. I just wanted to note that we've been at this for nearly two years now. Our first meeting was back in June of twenty-eighteen. And with very little marketing efforts, I think the demand, based on the location, it speaks for the location and the, and what people want for this type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Speak up. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak to this issue?
I don't know.
Go ahead. Anybody else? I'm about to close the public hearing if nobody's going to speak. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and introduce the attached ordinance.
Say that again.
I make a motion to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and introduce the attached resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle.
Mayor George here, I'll second that.
We have a motion, and second by George. Open it up for discussion.
Mayor George here.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was just writing down some things here as people were talking, just some key points and things. And as we talked, first of all, about traffic. County Road seventeen, of course, is very well able to handle that traffic. And then with the roundabout down below, the traffic moves pretty good. And there could be future roundabouts coming that would help move traffic better as well. A speed limit, I believe, and Brian DeFranc can correct me if I'm wrong, but the speed limit, that is the responsibility of the county. And also, okay, thank you, Brian. And also, I hope everyone from council had a chance to go out and look at this site. I was out there this afternoon and I was out there yesterday afternoon as well, too, taking a look at it. And, you know, the utilities are out there, the sewer and the water, it, it was run out. It was run out probably ten years ago, maybe twelve years ago. And, you know, you look at the, the developments that, that this company has done. You take Willowbrook out in East Burns Valley, that is a very beautiful complex. It's well-maintained, it's neat, it's clean. And I don't have any doubt whatsoever that if this should happen to pass, that this development corporation will do one super job with it and they'll be a good friend to every neighbor out there. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mayor Eileen Moore. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Eileen.
Okay. I, so I, I know that we are very in need of senior housing and especially affordable housing. And I've been very vocal about being excited about developments like that. However, I am not in favor of changing the comp plan willy-nilly. I don't take that lightly at all. And I don't think that we should be guided by who shows up with the money. I, I do believe that, that the Bradford Development has created some very nice housing options. And, and I would love for them to develop another housing cooperative for the seniors in our community, but I don't know if that is the right place. We're about to begin the process of a new comprehensive plan. And if that should change and determine that we should put high-density housing out in that area, then, then I would be willing to reconsider. But at this time, I think that for, for me, and I think for a lot, a lot of the folks that I've heard from, it's, it seems like it would be more fitting to have a plan first and to find a development that's appropriate for that plan, rather than to fudge the plan to fit what comes along. I also have a lot of concerns about access for the people who would live out there. The, the high-density or urban residential label that they're seeking does not, not match anything that is surrounding. And, and as someone mentioned, there's no access to parks or shopping or city services. I know that we would expect that most of those folks would have cars, but there's, there's not public transportation out there. There's not really places for them to recreate easily without having to drive. And I just, I have a lot of concerns about plonking something down that's high-density outside the city. You know, we're, we're not, I don't, I don't think at this point we're in the business of, or we're, we're at a place where we can create suburbs around Winona by, you know, building something large and then moving people out there. I think that the growth should be gradual and planned for. So even though I'm really in favor of senior housing for older adults, I'm, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Eileen.
Mydon.
Okay, Pam?
Yes, hi. I, I agree with Councilwoman Mueller. And I'm also agreeing with the Planning Commission's discussion previous to this.
I can't hear anyone. Okay.
Talk into your microphone, please.
Yes, I, I think I am. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I told you before, when, before I was supposed to, I have, I have quite a few reasons to think that there might be a better place for this development than, than the one that's been chosen. I think that it would be too big. Four stories is a lot different from three stories over there at the Winona Arms. Very different, different kind of profile. And the fact that there are no sidewalks and there's, the only proposal I've heard is that there would be a sidewalk down to where the, the, the signatures would be. And this is just, I just don't, I don't think that that's quite what we need for an urban residential area. Also, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Wilson Township did not approve of this annexation on March ninth, and which is why we're moving ahead with this annexing by ordinance. And I just don't think that that's, I don't think that's the way we should go.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Paul, go ahead.
So I, I just want to say, you know, I've, I've gone back and forth on this project because I, I like Councilmember Mueller have, you know, seen a great need for this type of housing. I have friends who have put down, down payments for this location. I also have friends who live in the neighborhood. So this isn't a, a decision that I take lightly. However, I do think that, that we should do this in a planned and orderly way. And given the fact that Wilson Township has not agreed to annexation, we're only annexing a little piece of the land here. I, I can't support this at this time. Also, taking into account the, the density, we're leapfrogging urban density into a very rural area. I think at some point, the neighbors in, in this location are going to see development and they'll have to accept that and realize that. And maybe if our comp plan is updated and changed, development like this can happen and will happen out there. But at this time, I, I can't, I can't support this request for the change in the comp plan.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Councilman Thurlie.
Al, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate all the discussion, all the commentary from people that have made their views known. And this isn't an easy process on video or on phones. So I appreciate the patience of people to express their points of view. I, I, I look at this as advice from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time debating this. They had a lot of good points, a lot of the similar points that were brought up tonight. And they voted to recommend it by a score, by a vote of five to three. And I'm familiar with the Willowbrook Cooperative, as most of us are. I think they have done an excellent job. And I know people who live there who are extremely pleased with their living accommodations and how the cooperative system has worked for them. So I'm going to vote in favor of this development when it does come to a vote, for these changes, anyway.
All right, well, thank you, Al.
Michelle.
I think all the council people is-
Oh, no, can, can I speak, Mark?
Well, I was, go ahead.
I made the motion, but I didn't make comments. I'll be quick, I promise.
I think, again, we're getting caught up on issues that are going to come before the Planning Commission and council, like how tall the building's going to be for access points. And all of that stuff is still to come in the future, as with any development. All we're really talking about right now is land use, which this wouldn't have a land use because it's not part of the city of Winona. I think that not only is this needed, as evidenced by the number of people who put deposits down and signed up to be in it, but they're looking for a specific lifestyle that they'll get by being in city limits with all the services that come with that, but not being in the downtown. And I'm a hundred percent in these types of developments. I don't find them to be encumbering of the neighbors. At least the three right in front are, were in favor of it. And they're the ones that are going to be mostly affected by the presence of this building. And I found in looking at Willowbrook's website that most of the properties they develop are very thoughtfully introduced into the environment that they are put in. And it's easy for us to say, well, you should put it there, or you should put it there. But there's a lot more that goes into consideration of a building than where we, as an individual, would like it to be developed, you know, not in my neighborhood, their neighborhood or. But the truth is that people like Willowbrook and the people that buy there look at the cost-effectiveness and the value that they'll get for the user as much as anything. And they're trying to build affordable housing. And if they wanted to build property they could sell for hundreds of thousands, then any of those other locations might have worked. But I believe when the staff in Willowbrook spent two years working on this, there was a reason they settled here. And I'm going to be a hundred percent trusting in our Planning Commission and that group coming forward with all of the opportunities the public have to weigh in, that what they ultimately recommend to us is going to be the best fit for that property. And if five stories isn't what they'll allow, then it, then Bradford Development will have to decide if that's what's going to work or not. But this is just step one. And like Al said, I think we have to trust in the process, and this is the, the process.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yes, listening to all the comments are all very, very good. You know, they bring up the fact it's not close to shopping or perhaps maybe restaurants, whatever it may be. You are less than a mile away to a major shopping hub with the Targets and the Walmarts and the Menards and the Fleet Farm. You're less than a mile away from it. Now, if they were to build this shopping center that we're concerned about across the street, there'd be a lot of uproar. And I know, and certainly mindful that we would be putting this large shopping center there. We're not going to see traffic coming and going. The road is designed to handle it. We have utilities out there to handle it. So like I say, I'm, I'm going to vote for the, for the change in the plan. And has everyone from council, have you had an opportunity to go out there and look at the site?
Councilmember Scholmar.
Yes.
And so I just, I just want to say, yes, I have looked at the site. And, and I don't have any qualms with, with-
And and I don't have any qualms with uh, with uh, developer, um, the traffic. My only concern is maybe with the height of the building, and I understand what Councilmember Alexander is saying that can be addressed later. This isn't orderly. And and I think that we should be working in collaboration with our legal official neighbors, that being Wilson Township, to make this happen in an orderly fashion rather the way, rather than the way that we're doing it.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'd like to state my uh, my thoughts on this as well. I know a number of people that are on that waiting list, and I know that they're eager to see this building built. And I know that the developers done a great job with Willowbrook. I know lots of people out there, and I've been there, and it's an amazing place. But I do have some issues with this project, and it's, it has to do with the scale of the project. I just don't see this uh, large of a building fitting that area. I don't think, I don't think it matches the surrounding area, and I don't think it fits under the urban residential uh, category as well. And for those two reasons and maybe others, but that's enough for now, I am not going to vote for the motion. So unless there's other comments that we could put it to a vote. All right, we'll put it to a vote. And we'll have a roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
No.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
No.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
No.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
So do we, Chris Wood, do we need to do a motion to deny the request and request that it be postponed for staff to draft that resolution for the future council meeting?
No, the, the, the motion was to pass, and it needs a super minority vote, and it didn't receive the requisite number of votes. So it failed the pass. So the long and the short of it, it acts as a denial, and there's plenty of record uh, in terms of why council persons voted the way they did.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Well, it's probably pointless to continue on with the next public hearing.
So item two point three will be withdrawn.
Okay.
And then moving on to the petitions, requests and communications, item three point one, reappointment to the Fine Arts Commission of Kerry Frederick.
I'm Michelle Alexander, move approval.
Eileen.
Second that, Pam Iden.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Item three point two is the Cotter Schools' street closure request for their graduation ceremony on Friday, May twenty second.
Aye.
Approval.
Who made that motion?
Uh, Paula, I did. We might have done it at the same time.
Okay, let's say Paul made it. Michelle seconded it. Okay. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point three is a request for the Island City Beer Run. This is an updated request to change the date to Saturday, August twenty ninth.
I would move to approve the attached license agreement for Island City Beer Run.
Councilmember Scholmeyer second.
Okay, motion by George and seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll take roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Item three point.
Motion passes.
Item three point four is a license agreement with Winona State Outdoor Rec Center to rent canoes, kayaks, and paddleboards at Prairie Island Campground.
I shall.
Pam Iden, I move to approve the license agreement.
Councilmember Scholmeyer second.
Motion by Pam and seconded by Paul, discussion?
Councilmember Thurli here with a question.
Go ahead, Al.
Um, are, does this change who can rent the, the, the canoes or the, the kayaks that are out there, or the paddleboards and things like that? I mean, does, is, my understanding is the whole of the, the, the entire public can do that. Does this restrict rental then just to people who camp at Prairie Island?
Mayor. Zach Chatterby.
Okay, Chad.
This does not restrict the rental to just the campers. This, this is a rental system that will allow the public, as well as those that are using the campground, to rent those pieces of equipment.
That's what I thought, I just had to have the clarification. Thank you, Chad.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
And Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Moving on to new business. Item five point one is the liquor license fees for 2020. And I did distribute earlier today an updated fee schedule uh, to reflect the two additional weeks on the state and the state order to have the restaurants and bars closed. So what we're looking at, or what we're proposing is they would have a credit for the amount of time that they're closed uh, that would be applied to their 2020 renewals. So on that worksheet, you'll see for the on sale intoxicating liquor licenses, they would receive a credit of sixty dollars and seventy one cents per week. For the nine weeks, it would be five hundred sixty four dollars, or excuse me, five hundred forty six dollars and forty cents that would be applied to their renewal for 2020. I'm also proposing that the fees be split into two payments. The credits would be placed on the first payment that would be due June fourth, and the balance would be due December first. And it's important to note that these credits and the two payments are only for those uh, on sale licenses. Uh, the off sale three, two, and, and liquor stores were not impacted, so they will pay the full amount upfront.
I'm Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the amended fee schedule for 2020. Eileen.
Pam Iden seconded that.
Okay, we have a motion by Michelle and a second by Pam.
That's right.
Discussion? Personally, I think it's a great thing that we're trying to help out these businesses in the way we can.
Hi, uh, this is Cynthia Knopf here, and I'm one of the owners of No Name Bar Winona. And I.
Cynthia, I'm sorry, but this isn't a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we understand, but.
Okay.
You're not allowed to speak at this time, sorry.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
But if you have questions, you can call staff tomorrow at, at City Hall.
Perfect, thank you.
Other council members, any comments?
Uh, Eileen Mueller, I just, I'm really happy that we're doing this, and you know, I, I know this affects a lot of our businesses in town, and there might be other, um, you know, small businesses that are wondering where they can get help like this, and I, I hope that they would ask and, and get creative about it. But I'm just, I'm really glad that we're able to do something to help our local economy, because I, I think anything we can do on a local level to help our businesses get back on their feet as quickly as possible is going to be really beneficial.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scholmeyer?
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
I, I'll concur with uh, Councilmember Mueller with her comments. Also, um, a question maybe for uh, Monica about um, the, the additional two weeks. Will, is it possible that then we would be revisiting this if there is another extension and/or if we have a second wave, we have some other issues in the fall, we come back again? Would that, is that a possibility?
Mayor and council, that's correct. The way I have this uh, structured is if they do have additional closures, uh, that would be applied to the second payment, and we would bring that back to council with the exact amounts that would be applied. But for now, the license renewals will be sent out tomorrow. Uh, that gives the uh, current license holders um, a month to um, send in their renewals, and we'll have it on the council the second meeting in June.
Uh, Councilmember Scholmeyer again.
Paul, go ahead, speak into the microphone.
Uh, the uh, second question I have, uh, if there are um, facilities who already paid their fees, will they be uh, reimbursed? If they've paid their full fee, will they be reimbursed, or will that, again, just be credit going forward?
Don't pay it, all right?
I'm not sure I understand. For liquor license, they all, all these licenses expire June thirtieth. So we're looking at the renewals that start July first going on. If we do have a business that uh, does not reopen, they can apply for a refund on the unused portion of their license.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor George here.
George, go ahead.
I just want to say, I thought Monica did a very good job on this, and uh, I want to give her a lot of credit, and whoever else she worked with in city administration to uh, hopefully make this happen tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? I too would like to thank Monica for bringing this to the council. I think it's a good, really good thing. I think we're ready to vote. All, uh, we will go, have roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next is item five point two. This is to suspend the transit fare collection for the balance of 2020. We did receive information from the Minnesota Department of Transportation that they are going to amend our grant to cover our local share, which is the fares for the rest of 2020. So um, they have not given us that grant, but taking them on their word, we will recommend just continuing the fares for the rest of the year.
Councilmember Scholmeyer moves to approve.
Michelle.
Mueller second.
Okay, I think, uh, motion by Paul and a second by Michelle. Discussion?
Uh, Councilmember Scholmeyer?
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, I'm just curious, uh, you know, I mean, in these times, uh, there's a lot of questioning from transit riders about safety and et cetera, of taking mass transit. And I'm just wondering if there are any numbers on our ridership over the last four weeks and how the pandemic has impacted that.
Sure. Um, we are um, concerned for our, of the safety of our riders, and we have taken steps to um, improve our, our situation. Every third run, we do close the buses down and do a, a cleaning. They are sprayed every evening. Uh, the drivers will not be handling cash. We are requesting or encouraging riders to wear a mask. Uh, the drivers are wearing masks, and the ridership is down significantly, but we are still transporting people primarily to the clinic and hospital as well as Target Walmart shopping. So um, I think we're between a hundred and a hundred and fifty passengers per day. Overall, it's a decrease of about eighty-five percent.
Wow.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, Councilmember Mueller, I um, I'm very, very excited that we are able to do that. I know there have been some community members who have been um, uh, speaking with staff and council members about going, figuring out a way to be fare free just as a way of functioning um, sometime in the hopefully not too distant future. And I know this is because of the pandemic. It's really important we get people to, especially to the hospital. But I just, I hope that um, as we keep working on making the city more accessible to um, all community members, that we can move towards a fare free system in the future.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? Okay, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilman Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
We're looking for a.
Oh, motion passed.
Moving on to item five point three, so 2020 Sidewalk Replacement Project, City Manager's Recommendation.
And make a motion to approve the attached resolution, Michelle Alexander.
George seconds that.
By Michelle, seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take roll.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilman Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
And Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Item five point four is the 2020 Sidewalk Replacement Project feasibility reports and resolution ordering hearing that would be held on May eighteenth.
I'm looking to approve the attached resolution for Monday, May eighteenth as a public hearing, Michelle Alexander. Sorry, George.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none, big roll.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilman Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Item.
Motion passes.
Item five point five, request approval for modification of the flood control structure and occupation within easement. This is for Bay State Milling.
I would uh, make a motion to approve the request.
Is that Michelle?
George seconded that.
Oh, sorry, Mark. Yes, Michelle Alexander.
Michelle made the motion and George seconded it. Any discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer?
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Uh, so um, as with any, any uh, changes and impacts on, on the levy, um, we need to take that very seriously. I'm assuming, I, I know, I can see Keith is, is uh, listening and paying attention that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's on this one with the Corps, et cetera.
The Corps has to approve this yet.
This is all about giving a letter from the, the council to start the process with the Corps. And then the, the Corps does their review. Actually, one of the things is that moving the pismeter, which is totally their, it's their function. So they'll tell us where they want to have it put. And the other one is a, a really small encroachment, and for that even, we'll together, or we'll ask the city attorney's office to put together an agreement um, that would allow it to be moved if we ever needed for flood control purposes or something like that.
Thank you.
Any comments? Hearing none, we'll take roll.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilman Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski?
Aye.
And Scholmeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point six is the Airport FBO Lease Fees.
Make a motion, Al Thurli here, make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I meant now I second.
Okay, motion by Al and uh, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll take roll.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Councilman Thurli?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Iden?
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 5.7 has been withdrawn from the agenda and so we are on item 7.1, council concerns.
And we'll start with the first word, Al Thurly.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I've got a few things for you today. As the mayor mentioned, today is International Firefighters Day, I believe, in the beginning here. And it's also Teacher Appreciation Week and I think, given our situation, even more than usual. And also a reminder to fill out the census form, if you haven't already, that's really, really important. And finally, over the last several weeks, some folks have contacted me asking whether I was running for reelection in November. And I told them I would comment during tonight's council concerns agenda item. I have been honored to represent residents of Winona's first ward from 1990 to 95 and from, again, from 2000 to the present. And like Mayor Peterson said a few meetings ago, I've been thinking about this decision for many, many months. As a reminder too, the filings will open two weeks from tomorrow, on Tuesday, May 19th. And run through Tuesday, June 2nd at 5:00 PM. I do not plan to file at this time. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Al. We'll go to Eileen.
Oh, okay, um, well, happy. Al noted that Firefighter Appreciation Day, in much less serious thing, is also Star Wars Day, which not deserves much.
Maybe the force. Did the force be with.
But I just wanted to remind folks that with the weather warming up, I think it's been really sunny and I think moods are improving, which is wonderful and we're coming out of winter. But I think it's made it really easy to forget that we are still in a pandemic and that people still need to be careful as they're doing their essential things like visiting the grocery store. And even as, I know now it's easier to talk with your neighbors or have a friend come stand in your yard and, and speak with them. But to just keep in mind that we still need to be really careful. And my, I'm so sorry, my dog is, sorry. And to just still be conscientious about the fact that there will probably be another wave of this. So everything we can do to lessen that. And speaking of dogs, I actually had a question. We have leash laws. Maybe this is a question for Chad or Steve. But do those leash laws apply on the trails?
Mayor and council, they do. They go through the park system is how that works. I know in the last week, we've had several concerns about dogs unleashed on trails and dogs on the East Lake. So staff discussed this today. Well, at least the leash in East Lake and we plan to bring something back to council just for some clarification or update the ordinance.
Okay, well, yeah, I, that's what I thought. And I have been on the trails as well and I see a lot of dogs unleashed. It's actually a reason I can't take my dog out anywhere because there are too many people not leashing their dogs. And so I just wanted to remind folks that we do have leash laws and you do need to observe them even on the trail. And it's not because you have a bad dog, it's because you don't know the behavior of other people and other dogs. I for one have a dog that isn't a fan of other dogs. And so if I could trust that everyone else was following the leash laws, I could take her places, but I can't. So I just want to remind everyone that as you're out recreating and enjoying the weather, please keep your dogs leashed. That's all.
Thank you, Eileen. Pam?
Yes, I, I would like to also reiterate what, what Eileen Muller just said about taking care and, and being aware. I know we're all getting really tired of having this pandemic be front and center. But now's not the time to go easy on it. So I hope we'll, we'll keep that in mind. So I'm looking forward to seeing you all. I don't think we're on Zoom, Midwest Music Fest this weekend, Friday and Saturday. There will be two different Zoom sites and, or two different sites that'll be streaming. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how this goes. They are paying the musicians and all of this music this weekend will be free. So tune in.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mark. So I, I today is May 4th. It's the 50th anniversary of probably the day that it has impacted my life more than any, any else. And that's the unfortunate circumstances at Kent State and, and this date, 1970. And, and the, the reason why I bring it up, it, it was also the month that my oldest brother was finishing boot camp and, and about to head to Vietnam. So a lot of things happen in a person's life. And, and I remember ever since that date, for months and months while he was, he was in Vietnam, watching the numbers on television in the evening news. And it's something that we're seeing today. Deaths and infected and recovered, et cetera. And, and I just want to remind my colleagues on council and, and, and staff and all constituents that may be listening. When we look at those numbers, they're people. And there are people who die, there are people who are infected and there are people who recover. And it's really important that we think about them as people, not just numbers. That's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Michelle?
So I've gotten a few complaints from neighbors on Harvester about truck traffic. And Steve, are we still thinking that maybe we can put up signs that remind people that is not a truck route? Some of the people in my, Eileen, I don't know if you're aware of it, but sometimes there's 16 to 18 trucks in the first part of the day going down Harvester. And I just learned that we can actually ticket them for that. So the neighbors over there are a little concerned about the amounts of, of traffic. And I'm hoping if there's businesses listening, that they can try to encourage those truckers to use other routes. Otherwise, it's the perfect time to get outside and work in the yard. It gets you outside seeing other people by still maintaining dish, distance. And isn't it great, spring? Like, I'm looking out my window right now and there's still sunlight. I'm, I'm very excited about that. And I'm hoping that means we're quickly going to approach that, the end of sheltering in place and can get back to being around people and socializing again.
Okay, thank you. George?
Thank you, mayor. I'll just get ready to stay in a few more days because it's going to be getting colder and rainier. So we will be stuck inside for a little while yet. And I just want to, just wish congratulations as well as the mayor did to Kerry Putz here after her many years in the finance department and to Dewayne Chadbourne. Many years ago, I had a chance to work with him in the fire service for about a year. And he certainly is a great individual, as you as mentioned. So outside of that, everyone have a good rest of your week and see you soon.
Okay, thank you.
And on the consent agenda, there is one item, approval of the minutes from April 20th.
Al Thurly here, moving to approve the consent agenda.
I will second Michelle Alexander.
Motion by Al and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly. Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Passes.
Mayor, I move we adjourn. George here.
I second Michelle Alexander.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say their roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thurly.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Good night.
Bye.
Good night, all.